Good evening. This is the May 24th, 2022 City Council meeting. We're going to call this meeting to order. First order of business is the invocation. Let's do a moment of silence. And the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, would you read the public comment procedure, please?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens should not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions or requests, must address the pending issues, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers will be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes, regardless of the number of items identified. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council should be placed in the box on the table in the chamber.
Okay, thank you, City Clerk. City Manager, you want to do the modifications?
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor and council members, staff would respectfully request to pull item 8D. 8D under consent.
Okay, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like signs, ayes have it. Okay, thank you. Need approval of the minutes for March 22nd, 2022, and April 26th, 2022.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular city council meetings on March 22nd and April 26th, 2022.
Second.
Moving second in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like signs, ayes have it. Thank you. Special recognition, City Manager?
Yes, sir, and counsel. Item 5A, firefighter paramedic Patrick King was unable to attend tonight, so we'll make sure that he gets his recognition as appropriate. Item B is letters of appreciation that we've received from Solid Waste, Mr. John Kelly, equipment operator; from Community Development, Mr. Timothy Ford, redevelopment planner; and from Fire and Rescue Department, Michael Brosman and Sean Holbrook.
Okay, thank you so much. And one other special recognition. We have a birthday today. Want to wish Sarah Stokoe a happy 20th birthday again? You go, Lee.
At least we're not singing to you.
You want us to sing? No? I don't mind singing, though.
I don't either.
Okay, all right. Do y'all want to sing? You have a problem? Let's sing it to her. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Sarah. Happy birthday to you. Now that I completely embarrassed you, let's go on. All right, we're up to boards and commission.
Yes, sir. Item 6A is the Titusville Historic Preservation Board requests for leave of absence. Staff, we have a recommendation to request from Member Roz Foster has requested a seven-month leave of absence from the Historic Preservation Board meetings for the month of June 2022 through December 2022.
Okay.
I vote that we approve it. So I know she goes away periodically, and she teaches, and I had understood she was taking off to teach, so.
Okay.
My second.
Do we need a public speak on this?
If there are cards, yes, sir.
Cards?
No cards.
Okay.
So I'll make that a motion.
Okay. It's moved by Member Nelson, seconded by?
Member Stokoe.
Member Stokoe. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like signs, ayes have it. Item B, sir.
Item 6B is the North Brevard Library District Board. The North Brevard Library District Board Semi-Annual Report is included in the Agenda Packet, no actions required of council. Onto 6C. This is the Titusville Housing Authority. Regular member Fletcher Portlock has expressed his willingness and desire to continue to serve on this authority as requested a reappointment for a four-year term to expire on May 31st, 2026. There are no other applications on file for your consideration.
Okay. What are your wishes?
I would say approve the appointment by the mayor, Fletcher Portlock, if we have no cards.
No cards? Need a second?
Second.
Moving second in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like signs, ayes have it. Item D, sir.
Item 6D is the Titusville Environmental Commission's Recommendation Right to Clean Water Charter Amendment. At the 11 May 2022 TEC regular meeting, with a 5-1 vote, the Commission recommended to city council that they support the Right to Clean Water Charter Amendment and to vote to have it placed on the ballot as a city charter amendment in the November 2022 election.
Okay. If you all remember, this discussion came up at the last meeting. So I would suggest that we hear from whomever is here to speak on this, and then we can have a discussion. Do we have any cards?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry?
Yes, sir.
Okay, why don't you call the first card?
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston. I've been resident here 50 years, and I'm especially supporting this because I see what's gone, what's happened to the Indian River. This is not about tap water. This is about our environment and especially our water resources, our aquifer, our Indian River, and so forth. And we have a problem. A big problem. And that is right before us is the Indian River. It's horrible. It's just like a desolation. It's nothing like it was. I mean, we used to have railroad tracks come here that went on Broad Street, and it would get the crabs and fish and shrimp and everything from the river and take them elsewhere. We don't do that anymore. It's, and of course, we used to have, they used to get mullet and jacks and all kinds of fish out of that river. And there used to be turtles in there, too. So it's, 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 it's gone to such a who is responsible for it? Our government is responsible for it, and our government has been receiving millions and millions and millions of dollars, and it's still going downhill. Obviously, they're not getting it done right. And I think that the government doesn't want to point out its mistakes. So this has to do with pointing out, government say, listen, wake up. And I think that this, this is a move toward progress to have the government being accountable and responsible. So I'm not going to go into any other issues about that, but just, I see it as, as, as having the government accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next card, please.
Nathan Slusher.
Nathan Slusher, 860 Allendale Street. So unfortunately, I missed this discussion last time. However, I have asked a ton of questions about this. I have done. I've put in five, six hours of communications on this, trying to understand it. And from my understanding, what I grasp on this is that it puts the power back in the citizens' hands where they can hold the government, or any government within Titusville City bounds, accountable if they intentionally or negligently pollute the Indian River Lagoon or the stormwater that runs into it. I will never not stand for the right for the citizens to hold government accountable. So I highly encourage to put this on the ballot because nobody is asking you to make a law here. Nobody is asking you to change an ordinance. They're simply asking you to put it on the ballot so Titusville residents can decide if we want the right to hold our government accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next card, please.
Tony Shifflow.
Tony Shifflow, 715 Tropic Street. Several things have happened recently since I've been attending the meetings and been involved in the local government, and they're rather unfortunate. And, and what I think naively is that it's because we're not being proactive. For instance, I just want to use the cement crushing factory plant that had to go in because there was no legal reason we couldn't stop it, even though we know that environmentally it's going to be harmful. So I think that we need, as, as the city in northern Brevard County that kind of gets looked over a lot because everything happens in Melbourne, or now Vieira, and Palm Bay a lot, too, Titusville could be proactive. We should be the leaders in Brevard County, and we have the opportunity. And maybe what we should do is look at that zoning around the little airport that is now one of 12 nationally designated by the FAA landing and takeoff sites for off Kennedy Space Center space launches. And how jolly it's going to be to have a concrete crushing factory, and then maybe something else that's heavy industry that comes in beside that, and all of these things so close to the Indian River Lagoon. We all know it's not good for it. So I think it's an opportunity for Titusville to be proactive and to be a leader in trying to do something that's really visible. And we've been collecting petitions because we were told we needed 4,000 to get this on the ballot. And we're coming to ask counsel because you could just do it by, by a vote. You could have this, this initiative put on the ballot and let the citizens have a voice. And Nathan was saying it's to hold government accountable. I don't read the petition that way, and I don't read the intention of the ordinance to hold you guys responsible for anything. I think it's to allow this, allow everyone, including the Titusville City Council, to hold accountable the polluters of the Indian River Lagoon. And we all know there's a lot of different things going on. So I think it's a very wonderful opportunity to be proactive and not to be, oh, we're kind of the last to get on the train. Let's get on first. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next card, please.
Michael Mijak.
Good evening, Vice Mayor.
Evening.
Counsel. My name is Michael Mijak. I'm a Titusville resident, and I am also the Assistant Director for the East Central Florida Rights of Nature Network, which is leading and spearheading this charge for the rights of clean water in Florida. What the TEC endorsed was the state version, which is more refined and more restrictive than the Rights of Nature effort that we are currently petitioning for. The difference is that one is a right of nature, and the other, the state version, is the right to nature. The right of nature is the right of nature to exist, to flow. In our case, what we're saying, the water has the right to exist, to flow, to be free of pollution, and to provide a healthy habitat. That's a right of nature. And that is legal because we have a Florida state constitutional amendment that says we already have the right to a clean environment. So clarifying that by water is certainly allowable and justified under current law. We have taxed ourselves in Brevard County to the tune of half a billion dollars with the Save Our Indian River Lagoon project, which is only going to remove pollution from the lagoon. It's not designed to fix the lagoon. It's not designed to preserve the lagoon. It's not designed to restore the lagoon or enhance it. It's simply to remove pollution. And it's a drop in the bucket. Our lagoon is vast. 25% of all of Florida's habitat, coastal salt marsh habitat, is right here in Brevard County, in our Indian River Lagoon. Our estuary is dying because of nutrification. Too many nutrients being presented through stormwater and other means, but primarily through stormwater. What this effort will do is give the city a legal position with which to take the state to task. Because the only way to solve this systemic problem of permitting through DEP and the executive branch is through the court. And we, the people, have to declare that we want this right to clean water, that we want to live only with clean water. And then businesses can grow. Our environment can grow. Maybe we can have a shellfish in a fishing industry again. But it begins with this legal toehold, this no-cost approach. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next card, please.
Nyra Atia.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Nyra Atia, Beechwood Court, and I'm happy to be here, and I once again thank you for your service. And I was, I had the Ganges and the Nile on my mind today. And I wonder what you think about those rivers so far away from us? The Nile being the, the river I was raised on as a child. The Ganges, one that I have admired for all the reasons that people admire, beautiful bodies of water. But the main thing is, it occurred to me that these rivers, the Ganges particularly, is considered sacred. It's a sacred entity. A body of water is a sacred entity. We think about it. We drink it. We bathe in it. We look at it. It furnishes not just nourishment for us and hydration, but it, it, it heals our souls. And to see a body of water violated in any way or polluted in any way, I've seen this happen to the Nile, and it's heartbreaking. And I'm thinking now that the Indian River Lagoon is a sacred space. And if you could think of it in this way, you would do your utmost, and I know you will, shall, do your utmost to protect it and to provide laws or amendments or whatever we need to make sure that this remains a sacred place in our midst, nourishing us and nourishing generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next card, please.
No more cards?
No more cards? Oh, well, bring it back to the council. Who wants to talk first?
I can always talk.
I know, go ahead.
I can always talk. So I read both the petition and the constitutional amendment. I will say I like the constitutional amendment better. Well, you guys as a group. I like the constitutional amendment more because it there's a right in Florida Statute 403 that says you have a right as an individual to sue DEP and the state agencies for an injunction or declaratory relief. It's there. By doing a constitutional amendment, you stop people in Tallahassee who may not be quite as considerate of our water bodies from changing that law. So I guess my question is, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Broom, is what rights would this give that Florida statutes wouldn't give? And then, secondly, we're talking about in a city ordinance or a city charter allowing people to go after state agencies, and that seems to already be there.
The constitutional amendment as proposed would create a fundamental right to clean and healthy waters, which is stronger, of course, as constitutional amendment, to create that right than just probably, you know, the Florida statutes would be. Now, of course, we could not adopt a constitutional state amendment into our city charter. It's two different animals.
Right.
So I understand you're talking about supporting this, and I agree that the fundamental right as proposed constitutional amendment is, be much stronger than a city charter. You would have to redraft, of course. If you wanted to add similar language, you'd have to be redrafted to be part of your city charter because you could not draft, accept this into your city charter. You're right, there are certain rights already provided.
Right.
As I understand it, as proposed, if that was in your charter, it could be used against government, against
I'm sorry.
Correct.
Just like we would use the Florida statute.
Right, but this is of a bigger scale and the constitutional amendment obviously much stronger than just your city charter would be.
Okay, say that again.
As a fundamental right, in my opinion, that creates a stronger position for individuals under the Constitution to claim that as a fundamental right than a particular right in your city charter.
Okay. So it might be worth considering at some point in a different format.
Potentially, it'd have to be researched. There are some statutes that changed a year ago based on some of this.
Okay.
For example, Florida Statute 403.4129A, which is part of the Environmental Protection Act, says, "A local government regulation, ordinance, code, rule, comprehensive plan, charter, or any other provision of law may not recognize or grant any legal rights to a plant, an animal, a body of water, or any other part of the natural environment that is not a person or political subdivision, or grant such person or political subdivision any specific rights relating to the natural environment not otherwise authorized in general law or granted in state constitution."
Okay.
So you have that issue of preemption. And so that would have to be researched.
Okay.
But again, again, it says, that's provided by general law or state constitution, which this would provide. So this would be the document.
I did read some of the case law, and I believe some of the case law actually says 403, I think it's 412, grants rights to clean water.
Correct, and that's what this subsection 9A, that was created in 2020.
And I think that the case law actually said constitutional right to clean water, clean, clean water bodies.
Correct, and that's what they're saying is those causes of action are available under state law and under the state constitution.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, I don't see any other council member. Oh, Member Robinson.
Yes. I, first, I want to state that I, I think it's a wonderful goal to have clean waters. And I understand that, that the S is on the, the right to clean and healthy water, waters. But I know this, and, and my little experience in life is that every time we try to come up with ideas to make things better, we leave out the cost of doing that. We don't, we said, we need to do this, and, and I believe that it, it should be done. And I think it would benefit not only the animals, the fish, nature, the people, but it's so many times when we come and want to do these things, we don't include what is it going to cost to make it happen? And that's what my dilemma is with this. I, I have, I did read it, and one of the most startling parts of this, when it defines person, and does person mean any individual, partnership, joint venture, cooperation, any group of the foregoing to include nonprofit organization, any tribunal entity, any government entity? When you start putting all of those things, you got dollar signs after dollar signs and after dollar signs. And none of the proposals, none of the fixing says, where is this money? Where is, where are these dollars going to come from to make it happen? If the city adopts this, someone's got to manage it. Someone's got to, to ensure that it is followed. Or any Joe B can come up and say, well, I saw someone do this, and I saw, and I'm going to file a petition against them. So there's a cost that goes along with this. And, and one, I don't see good clarity on how we going to do it, how it can be done. And also, along with that, incorporating the dollar, the prospective money. Mike just said that what has been put forth thus far is a drop in the bucket to get it clean. I heard that. That rang loud in my ear. So where do we get, when we get, when we get to this point? Where are these dollars? Do we tax people more, and then they're going to complain more? What is the effects of this becoming? And my concern that we need to know what are the effects of making something like this happen? And then, are the people really, really willing to say, I want to pay more taxes so I can have a clean, clean waters across the state of Florida? And I don't see that answered here as of yet. I think that it's, the effort should not be stopped. I think it should happen. But I need to know and be able to read how it's going to happen. That's my thoughts on it.
Okay. Any other council member? No? All right, so I'm not even going to weigh in that much because I think I said enough. At the last meeting about this, I do want to say, and I want to acknowledge Mr. Mijak, and here I had a to say, and I want to acknowledge Mr. Majak, and yeah, I, I had a conversation about this, and, um, I, I understand where his heart is, but I just, I don't feel comfortable with it, um, for some of the reasons that, that you said for sure. Anytime you have this, these worries of any person can do certain things, and, um, some other words that I saw in there, that just was too nebulous, uh, for me. Um, and litigation is always, is always there. And so, um, I think we should just go forward. They asked for us to consider, do I have a motion from anyone who want to consider adding, um, this to, uh, the charter ballot for, uh, 2022?
I don't think we can right now. I don't think it's in the form that it can be, you can even consider it for a ballot or for amending our charter.
No, I, I just see it. If you don't have a motion, we don't have a motion. That's what I'm asking for. Okay, we don't have a motion, so this matter is concluded. Thank you all. All right, petition and request from the public present, not agenda items. Anyway, uh-oh. Be nice. Hi.
Hello, I'm Lisa Moser, um, 3847 Lagerhead Lane MIMS. Um, I'm actually up here to be nice.
Wow.
Yes, yes. So as many as you know, we, um, at First United Methodist Church, we got a community garden going, and then we found out the well water had too much salt. So then we found out we actually had a meter box on the property, but no meter. So we had some little issues of trying to figure out the cost, what it was going to cost us to get a, um, a new meter put in, and I have to say, everybody worked with us. I heard the, the city attorney got involved, the city manager, the mayor talked to us, and we just appreciate everybody doing what they could to make it a compromise and a, a cost that we could get a meter box, a meter put in. We have a meter in there now. We have water over to the garden, and so we just came here to say thank you.
Wow.
See?
Well, we got one, one problem with you. I don't think you told us who you were.
Oh, Lisa Moser.
Address?
I said my address.
Did you?
Yes, I did say that.
Okay, well, you're quite welcome.
That I remembered. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you so much, Lisa.
I'm going to piggyback on Lisa. I'm Brenda Pittman, 4490 Sherwood Drive in Titusville, but not the city limits. Um, I wanted to let you know that we have had our first crop with the community garden. We do have limited community participation. Uh, we have one gentleman who rides his bicycle by every night and then spec what's there to pick and picks it if he needs it, and he always leaves some for the next person. We have, uh, also had some people come in and plant things. We don't know who planted them, but they're growing and doing well, so they are participating. And we have harvested a crop. We've, uh, provided collard greens, mustard greens and kale, and if it wasn't picked when it needed to be picked, we picked it on Friday morning, washed it, bagged it, and handed it out at our food pantry on Friday afternoon. We've also done turnips and turnip greens, beet greens. We've done, um, where am I going now? We've had some tomatoes, we've had some onions, um, we've had radishes, but we're hoping for a better crop in the, after this one. We had the water problem, but we thank you for everything that everyone has done, and hopefully it will continue to grow.
Thank you so much.
All right.
She loves food.
Well, right now, we're getting ready to plant the summer crop, so you may want to wait about six weeks.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Can I point out something?
Yes, ma'am.
They got out here and left the man who did the work sitting there. Tom did the work, and they left him sitting over.
And if I may, I, I want to convey my personal heartfelt thanks because I tried for so many years to get that accomplished, and, um, I'm glad from the bottom of my heart to see it happen. That is a blessing to the city of Titusville. Thank you. Thank you so very much.
And I guess I should tell you, we've also created a small garden for the connection kids, so they can have their own garden.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, no one else from petition and requests? There we go.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. Uh, and I want to thank Mr. Jordan for, for, and also everybody else here for, for listening to the comments about the, uh, the, the, uh, clean water, uh, amendment, uh, and also from Mr. Jordan especially for, uh, listening to Mr. Majak. I'm here because there, there's some things that we shouldn't do. Some things we shouldn't do. We shouldn't spit in the wind, and we shouldn't pull on Superman's cape, and, uh, we shouldn't have a, a subdivision based upon a, uh, an erroneous survey or a fake or false survey. And, uh, I've, uh, I've brought this to your attention before, uh, in, in terms of this, this poster. Uh, and it's about the, the subdivision, which is a townhouse, SNJ Oaks, and what I've done is I've, um, I've discovered, uh, that the survey is based upon a, uh, it's a fake survey. In other words, it really wasn't done. Somebody just picked an angle and, uh, put it on there. It was an angle that was not correct. Uh, and I backed it up with, uh, uh, an affidavit, a sign and seal, and, uh, uh, I've seen information about the city's measurements on it, which shows that it's a fake survey, and yet, uh, and I hear a CM, that means city manager does nothing. So, um, I have talked to the, uh, Mr. Cook, and Mr. Cook under, explains to me is that the city is not required to, uh, or city survey is not required to look at the survey. So I have looked at the survey, and, uh, the city could look at it if the city manager would say, look at it, but he doesn't. So, uh, what we have is a situation which, you know, we're not pulling on Superman's cape or spitting in the wind, but we're doing pretty bad stuff. Uh, and, uh, it's, it's going to be, it's a comedy of errors, or I'd say it's a, it's a tragedy of errors. Uh, and, uh, it's going to blow up in, in, in the city's face. There's no way out of it. So it's a lose-lose situation for the city, and nobody's listening. Uh, I've sent, I've sent, made many calls to the city manager, no response. Emails, no response. So you get what you get, and, uh, it's going to blow up in your face someday. If, if somebody buys the project and says, new owner here, what are they going to do? In other words, a subdivision or a plat based upon a, a fake survey, it's way off. So, uh, you've got the problem. I'm asking you to do something about it. You don't do anything about it. That's, that's what you've been doing sometimes. It's, do nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, consent agenda, city manager.
Yes, sir. Council, are there any, uh, questions of staff for items I through, correction, A through I minus D? Uh, does any member of council want to pull any of the agenda items, uh, A, A through I minus D?
Nope.
Clerk, are there any cards on any of the gen, consent agenda items?
Yes, sir. One individual for six items.
And, uh, Mr. Chair, with your permission, and I'd like to read for the record the titles of the consent agenda items.
Right.
Consent agenda item 8A, approve change order number three to contract 21 Bravo 017 with Gagori Construction Incorporated for additional work. Consent agenda item 8B, amendment, approve amendment one for the engineering services for the Morning Dove Water Treatment Plant Sand Filters Rehabilitation Project. Consent agenda item 8C, approve the additional vendors of records for vendors over $15,000 and allow the city manager to execute that. Skip and D. Uh, item E, approve amendment two to the Indian River Avenue Force Main Replacement Design Work Order. Consent agenda item 8F, approve the work order for the design and engineering services for the replacement of the Seminole Lift Station and the demolition of the Bayview Lift Station. Consent agenda item 8G, authorize the engagement letter from attorney Christopher Rowe of Rowe Bryant Miller Olive. Consent agenda item 8H, authorize the mayor to assign the letters, two letters of support for the Titusville Playhouse Grant Application for State of Florida Division of Arts and Culture. And consent agenda item 8I, approve the award for the purchase of servers for the Morning Dove Treatment Plant.
Okay, thank you, city manager. Did you call the first card?
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I'm here to speak on some, especially some magenad, consent agenda items that I oppose, and that includes 8B, 8E, 8F, 8D has been pulled, uh, and 8I. And there's one that I have a ni, neither on it, and that's 8G. Um, but on the four that I oppose is that, um, I want your special attention on that because I'm opposing, opposing them for misinformation, disinformation, and cover-ups by Mr. Stauffer on 11 separate matters that I'm bringing to your attention. We're, we're talking about misinformation, disinformation. Let's say, let's use the word dishonesty. And Mr. Stauffer's here. And so number one is the boil water alert. So we had, last year, we had the boil water alert, and some people were very disappointed about what was going on, like when it happened and notification and so forth like that, and he gave a, uh, I don't know, a 10 or 15-minute presentation to council, and there was no discussion. But then I called up FDEP, and they gave a different story. You can do the same thing.
Vice Mayor, excuse me, I, which one are you speaking on there? I'm trying to follow you.
Okay.
Which item are you speaking on?
Tell us which one.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to follow you.
Okay, I'm, I, I, okay, thank you for interrupting, but, or, or stopping me, but I, it appears to me the clock should stop when this happens.
No, Mr. Johnston, go ahead.
We'll give you the time back, but please tell me what item you're speaking.
Okay, I, I, I explained to you again, I'm talking about four, four items, and I, and I said in my introduction, I said, on these particular four items is that I, I have 11 matters that I object to on these four matters that has to do with the source, and this is Mr. Stauffer, who is involved heavily with these. These are from his, his department. So I'm, I'm speaking about 11 matters that are issues of misinformation, disinformation, and let's say, I use the word, let's say dishonesty. I don't know if I'm going to get any time back. Is that, is it, does that answer your question, Mr.?
No, it did not, but if the rest of the council accepted...
No, we, we're fine with it.
Except that, I, I'll go along with it. I need the specific item that you're speaking to, so I can understand. I, I just may not be as, uh, alert as the rest of the staff.
I want to stop the clock a minute.
But, but I want to know the item that you addressed.
Okay, from what I understand, just to, to make it clear, he's in opposition of B, E, F, and I, and what he's saying is he wants to talk about those collectively and tell us why he thinks this misinformation is being given for those four items. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, start the clock, please.
Okay, I lost about, uh, 45 seconds on that, but, okay, here, here, here it goes. Now, I say, I started with number one. Number one item was, was the boil water alert, and I said what you could do is you could, you could, is that, he gave another presentation at another council meeting, and he brought up what, what I found out from FDEP, which I reported, sent an email out and so forth like that, and that was the issue about what? For log virus. For log virus. He didn't mention a thing about it. Then he mentioned it to it the next time because I brought it to the attention. I got the information from FDEP. He missed a lot, number of things that he, he could have mentioned about what, what was happening with, with the boil water alert, but he didn't do it. So that was, uh, a case of misinformation and disinformation that continues today. It's not good. Okay, that's number one. I got, uh, 10 more. Number two is that, uh, I won't go into it much, but number two is the, uh, is this one right here, is that, in other words, he wouldn't have, he wouldn't turn the fountains off. I mean, in spite of many calls from me and other people, a lot of people, saying, hey, turn the fountains off. And he, he had them on not just in December, but January, February, January and February. In other words, we had, uh, I got pictures of it, of this, of, of, of people in the, at the, people at the park, the wind blowing, spraying. None of that. I got a picture of my car sprayed with sewage, and, uh, the picture taken by Joe De Niro. Yeah. So, so that's, that's the second one, is that, uh, he should, he should have, he should have turned the, the water off instead of turning the, the fountains off. He just went ahead and had people and cars sprayed with sewage, the raw sewage, which is not a good idea. And number three was, was the, is the consent order number 21 dash 0113, which says that, that the city of, uh, according to FDPE and the city, is that sewage stopped, uh, raw sewage stopped going to the river on December the 19th. My God, we got photos, videos and everything of that much later than that, even though it goes to February the 18th, where it was witnessed by many people of the sewage going in the inlet at, not inlet, but on the, in the culvert on US One at Sandpoint Park and going over to Space View Park next to Burger King. That's February the 18th. February the 18th, unbelievable. So, uh, it, it's not true, uh, that consent order. That's, okay. Number four, uh, misinformation and disinformation and cover-up on Baker's subdivision. This is in 2012. That's a long time ago. So he was getting in this misinformation, disinformation. Anyway, go, go back to 2012 when he was talking, he talked to me and city manager and so forth, and didn't have any information on, uh, on hundred-year floodplains in that area. Yet, he had all kinds of calculations with, with the, with the new project there at, um, Senior Center with the dam that showed, that showed what? It showed that FEMA's maps were wrong, and he didn't, he didn't say anything about it, and they didn't report it to, to, to FEMA. They didn't report to FEMA until, until what? Maybe 2014, under a lot of pressure? And then in 2016, we found out, yeah, indeed, the firm map is wrong. Firm map is wrong. Wrong, same thing, you know, firm map, I've talked to Joely Nelson about Parkland, Parkland Estates, the firm map is wrong. There's no calculation, not even calculations. So, um, that's, that's the number four. Number five is this, um, uh, $10 million, uh, uh, park, park pork barrel project in which, uh, uh, it was a consent agenda item last year for upgrading recycled water, cleaning of recycled water. And that's, that's a joke. It was $10 million when we first approved it. Now it's up to 13.5 million, according to papers I read now. Uh, that's, that's another thing that it's, uh, and it's, 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 the city manager reports it's going to not cost us any money. It's going to cost somebody money. Number six is compensatory storage violations. He's also violated when he was in charge of, of storage of, uh, when in stormwater, before he get, went over to Kevin Cook, compensatory storage for all these wares and dams. Never considered at all. It's violation of law, violation of city law, violation of St. John's law. Big time, big time. In fact, uh, so what the city did is that they took all these, uh, wares and dams, and they lost all the designs. They lost all the construction plans and everything and designs. They lost them all. Not on record. Can't find them. That's mysterious. But anyhow, they're recoverable from St. John's River Water Management District, a lot of it, not all of it. Uh, number six. Number seven is the renewal of the, oh, the removal of the water tower. You all remember the water tower we hear on South Street is that, uh, I, I claimed, you know, or is it, is it going, is the right thing to do? And I was told that there's calculations for it. Well, months later, I found out, hey, I couldn't get calculations. They said, well, you send us, uh, I don't know whether it's $2,500 or what it was, and they'll do the calculations to show that it's, it's justifiable to take the water tower, tower down. do the calculations to show that it's justifiable to take the water tower down. That's a big deal. That's a multi-million, that's, that's an expensive water tower. So we took it down, and they say it's justified, justified by calculations. So maybe it's calculations now, but at that time it wasn't, and you were told that it was justified by calculations. What are, number, number seven?
Eight.
Number eight. He doesn't respond to phone calls, emails. That's, that's understandable. Number nine is the pumping of Space View Park. What we had over there, we had sewage within Space View Park over there next to Burger King. So he brings these big tanker trucks there, pumps it into these tanker trucks, and takes it to our sewage treatment plants and treats it. Space View Park Pond is directly connected to the river. It doesn't overflow to the river, it's directly connected to the river. Water from the Indian River goes in and out of Space View Park. It's directly connected to the river. It's tidal, it's tidal affected, wind affected. And so what we did is we were pumping Indian River water into the tanks, we paid for it to be trucked to.
Time's up, sir. Give him forty-five seconds.
Okay, thank you. So what we did is we took these tanker trucks full of Indian River water for the most part, and we, we paid to treat it. It's unbelievable. And we said we were treating our raw sewage. We were treating, for the most part, we were treating Indian River water. Crazy. Whoops, real crazy. So that's number, where are we, number nine? Number eleven. Personnel, personnel used for the cleanup, the sewage, raw sewage, were personnel who were not treating raw sewage, who were not vaccinated for working with raw sewage. As far as I'm concerned, it's completely illegal to do that, and that's what we did. The city's not gonna report about that, for sure. And there's, there's a number of employees that have gag orders on them not to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, come back to the council, what are the wishes of the council?
Move to approve consent agenda.
App, move to, sorry.
It's okay.
Move to approve consent agenda items eight A through C, and
E.
E through I.
Right. Give a second.
Second.
Moves in second in discussion. Roll call, please.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Okay, passed, thank you.
Yes, sir, on to ordinances, we are on Agenda Item nine A, which is ordinance number twenty-three, twenty-two, adult daycare facilities. The city attorney will read for the first reading.
Ordinance number twenty-three, twenty-two. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances to create adult daycare as a limited use and setting forth conditions for adult daycare as a limited use in certain zoning categories by creating Chapter twenty-eight zoning, Section twenty-eight dash ninety adult daycare, and amending Section twenty-eight dash fifty-four use table, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
This is the first of two required public hearings. The second, final hearing is scheduled to be conducted by City Council on fourteen June twenty-two at six-thirty. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance at their meeting on eighteen May twenty-two and recommended approval with the elimination of the proposed UMU limitation, which is C number two related to the Deleon and Bark Avenue area. Mr. Busaka is here to answer any questions that you may have on this first reading of ordinance twenty-three, twenty-two.
Okay.
I don't have a presentation, but I can answer questions.
Okay, any council member have any questions for? No questions, thank you. We're not voting on this tonight, so nine B. Oh, do we have any cards? No cards? Okay, nine B.
On to nine B, which is ordinance number twenty-four, twenty-two, billboards adjoining Interstate ninety-five, and the city attorney will read for the record.
Ordinance number twenty-four, twenty-two. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances to establish specific standards for billboards adjoining the I ninety-five right-of-way by amending Sections twenty-eight dash one oh two billboard and thirty-two dash twenty-six bench signs, bus signs, bus shelters, and billboards, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date, and incorporation into the code.
This is the first of two required public hearings. The second and final public hearing is scheduled to be conducted by City Council on fourteen June twenty-two at six-thirty. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance at their eighteen May twenty-two meeting and recommended approval six-one. The member that was opposed provided no explanation. Ms. Busaka is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Busaka? Do we have any cards? Well, gee whiz, let's go on to the next one, then.
On to item ten A, which is ordinance number twenty-five, twenty-two, updating the Water Resources Technical Manual specifications, and the city attorney will read for the record.
Ordinance number twenty-five, twenty-two. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter thirty, Article one, General Provisions, Division four, Technical Manuels, Section thirty-eight Technical Manuels by adding subsection I incorporating the twenty-two Water Resources Technical Specifications, by revising existing language for clarification, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
This is the first reading. The second reading and public hearing is scheduled for the regular City Council meeting on fourteen June twenty-two at six-thirty, and Mr. Stauffer is available to answer any questions that you may have on this ordinance twenty-five, twenty-two's first reading.
Do you have anything to say, sir?
Um, no, no presentation, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, any council member have any questions? No questions, thank you very much. On to the next one, sir.
We have no old business, on to new business, which is item twelve A. This is the City Hall LED Sign Design Advisability. The original signs at the fire department in City Hall were submitted and installed utilizing older technology. As a result of the messages were not always readable, and you could only use a few words per posting. City Hall sign no longer functions as it was approved for replacement. The signs are used for safety messages, public city events, job announcements, local attractions, and various other city communications. Jim's here to answer any questions, and he, I believe he has a short presentation, and what we're asking for is to make some design recommendations back, and we'll come back to you with those, along with the associated costs for that.
Okay, I'll give you a little background on the sign. Previously, we did an RFP many, many years ago to put a sign out there. Had several contractors come in, we hired one based on their qualifications, they all submitted designs. Nobody liked any of the designs, so a former employee and I, we came up with some designs that were approved by council, and that's how those signs came about. City Manager mentioned that this sign is now malfunctioning. I think about two months ago, we couldn't revive it, so probably the last message was, do not resuscitate. So that's where we're at. And what we did is, as a group in my department, we looked at, well, I know, I looked at a hundred and fifty, two hundred signs. I didn't drive for all of them, I just got on Google Images, municipalities, some private, and the guys also looked at signs, so we looked at a lot of signs. And in the end, we ended up with like three signs that we manipulated, changed colors, did things, and that's what we brought forth. Now, if you don't like any of them, then we can back up and punt. What we were choosing to do, since last time we came to council with our design, and that's what was accepted, not the ones from the RFP, we thought maybe we'd do a bid this time instead of an RFP, which would expedite the process a little bit. So going forward here, let's see if I can get this going. That's what we just talked through, basically. Show you a little brief overview. The sign, City Manager mentioned the readability of the sign. If you look at the far right, you'll see nineteen millimeters, and by the way, they call this the pitch. I don't know why, it's like soccer, I don't know why they call the field the pitch, but on the right, nineteen millimeters, that's low resolution. It does have a place for nineteen millimeters, it's a long distance away. And as you move to the left, they get closer and closer. And where we should be is somewhere between ten and six. Ten maybe being the sweet spot, six is much more resolution, but that can have a problem with, with the southern sun. So where we're looking to get on this next sign is probably ten or six. My guess is it'll be ten. Now, I should have said spoiler alert for Mayor Allen, because they haven't installed this yet, it may be going in this week. And the reason I'm showing you that, that's an entranceway signage, but there's only one reason I'm really showing you that, it has extruded letters on it, that's what we put into our design, so the letters pop out, like Titusville would pop out, it'd be backlit. But what you see on the right is like a wave they put on that sign. And so it's under construction, at that point it was. And here's what I'm showing you. If you look at the left, that's a graphic, and that's what we're gonna show you of the signs we did, was a graphic. And if you look at that, it looks like they got three fins coming out of it. But in reality, it's that, that part on the top, the wave. So going forward, I'm gonna show you three signs, and then we're, we put them in three different environments to give you a better idea of what you're looking at. And we're hoping that maybe you'll approve one of them, and then we can go out to bid, we'll have to do the specifications, all that stuff. If not, then I guess we'd probably go backwards and then try to do an RFP and let them come in with designs. So this, this is the first design, and it's like three layers at the top, and then Titusville pops out, that's extruded. Gateway to Nature and Space is not necessarily black font, but that, that also pops out. And then the bottom address there would be inscribed on it. And there's also some lighting and stuff like that that we'll show you in a second. What I will say about the base there, the size of the sign really matters, because we only have so many square feet we can put up there. So you may have not noticed this, but I'm gonna tell you anyway, there's no city seal on that. The last one I put a city seal on, we had redesigned the city seal, I thought it looked pretty shock, but we redesigned it for promotional purposes for the city's marketing budget. But we can, as we change messages, we can put the city seal up. Now, if we put the city seal on there, all that square footage where the base is at actually counts towards our square footage right now, if you got an address, it doesn't. So then you gotta take away something. And when I was perusing most of the city municipality signs, I saw about fifty percent of them had the city seal, maybe less. Almost all of them had their motto, like ours, Gateway to Nature and Space. So I just wanted to explain that, I didn't want later on somebody asking, you know, why is there no city seal? And we can put that on that LED sign, and that, ignore that flag, it's kind of distracting, but it's just to denote that LED sign's there. So at night, that area up there around that, that would light up, and we were also thinking about where that is on the base, it's kind of an offset, so you could actually light that also. And then here's another view of that, and we put it in front of City Hall, because we're trying to give you a better idea of what it actually looks like in real life, even though it's not, because it's just two D. And let's see, did I leave one out? No. Let me get back there. That's why I was pressing the wrong button. So on sign two, this one, we've used the brick from City Hall, and it, it did look a lot better, because we had a richer colored brick on there, and it made it look pretty sharp. But when we kind of, you know, you can't go just have brick right behind it that doesn't match the bricks on the sign. So we switched it to the duller, browner brick like we have out there, and it didn't look as good, but it still looks good, I think it's a pretty nice design. And there that one is at night with some accent lighting and stuff. There's another view of it in front of City Hall. So that's that sign. This sign is a takeoff on the one they did on Mayor Allen. Let's just, just be honest with you, that's close to what they did. And then here it is at night. Like that. So to sum it up, here's the three signs. If you want us to change something, do something different, go back to do an RFP, we can do that, but I was looking to see if any of them might satisfy your desire for a sign in front of City Hall.
Council, Nelson.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I sort of like number two, and especially at night, that seems to pop out. My only question would be Titusville, the Titusville part seems to overwhelm the message. So maybe where that flag is, make that a little bit bigger, and the Titusville a little bit smaller.
You talking about the LED portion? You said to make Titusville a little smaller.
Yeah, make the, the top part a little bit smaller, and make where the flag is the LED portion a little bit bigger. That would be my only suggestion.
That's possible to do, and more likely in the daytime it would be just fine.
Yeah.
Possibly at night, and that, that's little changes that we could make if we had a contractor, you know? To say, no, you wanna do this, you wanna do that.
Yeah, because right now, just looking at it, it doesn't seem to be balanced between the top and that middle, and of course, the bottom, you want smaller anyway. So I think that would give you a little more balance.
Yeah.
Design-wise.
Okay, thank you. Member Stokel?
Yep, I like number two. That's my favorite of the three. Yeah, that's it.
Sir? Two. Well, I like number one. And I'll tell you. Well, you, you asked us the question, and to me, number one seems to just be more architecturally pleasing to the eye. The middle one, in my mind, is just boxy. It doesn't do anything to me. Number one makes me smile. It doesn't look cricket.
You don't, you don't have a, you don't have an artistic eye. You don't mind me, I'm sorry. Yeah, there's been a lot of back and forth when I've shown certain people. My wife, at first, was the only one that said she liked number two.
Oh, is that right?
And I kind of liked number three, and then other people have liked, I mean, number three, I like number one, but a lot of people have said three, especially when we had the different colored brick on it. But like I said, right behind the sign there, if you remember, there's a wall out there, and it's all brick, just like City Hall.
Right. One of the questions I have is, is this the same size of signage we have now?
It, no, it's, it's the LED portion.
Yeah, the LED.
No, it's, it's larger, and it would have more pixels. Let me give you a real world example of what I was talking about with the pixels. Somebody would call me, and they'd say, hey, can you put this on the sign? That'd be three sentences, sometimes a paragraph. I said, I'm not making this up, can we get that down to three words and abbreviate Friday? That's how difficult it's been for us to get a, you know, and then you gotta also look at the fact, it's not the quality we need, and if people are going thirty, forty miles an hour down there, whatever speed they go. So, yeah, they are, they're a better size or a better quality, all they would be. Now, when we budgeted for this, things were different, you know, as you guys all know. And so I don't know that if we're in the ballpark now like we were when we first started looking at this.
Vice Mayor, you were on, I believe you were the chairman of the chamber when that sign was acquired. So you've been through this, and I think the size that we're looking at is not as tall as that, but the LED portion will be similar.
Okay.
Yeah, we hit the max size for what we can put in this area, and we're looking almost at the max size for square footage. And the LED part also counts as your square footage.
It does, okay. I, I don't like the brick one at all. And, and one of the reasons I don't like it is, it tells me we're putting something up new, which psychologically says that we're gonna keep what we have. I can't handle that for sure, so I'm still with number one. But, you know, I, it's not gonna kill me to agree to number two, but I like number one a whole lot better. And I think what you're gonna find out is, even though the majority likes number two, the minority, being me, is correct.
I, it's fifty-fifty. They were both going, a lot of them were going between one and two, but I think we did get more ones and twos, but, you know, it's, again, it's a graphic, so it's not going to give you the true visual of what it would look like. And I did show number two to a contractor, and he liked that, so who knows?
Well, it's simple as a deal, I would assume, but, okay, well, you've heard from us. I do have a question, you said we're gonna, the pixel's gonna be between, the pitch is gonna be between six and ten, but you had an eight, you had, sorry about that, you had eight there, so why didn't you?
That's a graphic I stole. So it has eight, but a lot of them don't make eight.
Okay.
And when you get down to six, from what I understand, there can be a problem, even though it's a much more like TV, it's, it can be hard to see in a bright light. So with our southern sun, that might be an issue, that's why ten seems to be. That's why ten seems to be, I mean, I'd do either one, but we want the best that we can get.
Absolutely.
For years, we regretted not getting what we needed.
All right, you heard from counsel, even though counsel is wrong on this one?
I heard, but I'm not sure what the...
Majority said they liked number two?
I know that wasn't your favorite, Jim.
Jim, I'm sure you were with me.
I'm happy with it.
No, he liked the brick. I can tell when he was saying it.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, I could tell. Did you like the brick?
Do I like the brick one? I really liked it when it was a deep orangier color, a nice-looking brick. I'd say our City Hall didn't have a nice brick, but it did look totally different. And then, so we can't do that. We gotta change that to match. If we're gonna put brick, we have to match the brick, so.
Yeah.
And then, who knows? You guys might build City Hall one day. It's not brick.
Okay, thank you, sir. Call the cards, please.
Nathan Slusher.
If you're not gonna come up here and say you agree with me, then you need to sit down, sir.
Ooh, he agrees with us then.
Actually, no. I have a question for you. So I see what you're seeing, and I see what you're seeing. Is it possible to take the bottom section of one and put it on the bottom of two? To make the LED bigger, which will stop that box look on the left side, and put the wave on the bottom, on the wave of, on the bottom of two, but have the wave of two on top?
I like that.
So you take, you guys are looking at one and two here. You take the top of two and the bottom of one and combine them. So the LED is actually bigger and it blocks off that blue box on the side that Mr. Jordan's seeing. But then that wave at the bottom that he likes goes onto two. So you got a wave on the bottom, you got a big LED, and you got a wave on the top that you guys like.
Yeah, it's a good compromise. I think we should agree with that.
I am okay with that.
Okay.
I'd like to see it.
Oh, she has a visualizer.
Or you can come back. You got some scissors? I'll cut it out.
One of my employees that was drawing a lot of this stuff, he says, if you can dream it up, I can draw it.
You can draw it.
About two weeks later, he says, stop dreaming.
Oh, my goodness.
I think it's a good compromise.
Can you bring it back to us? I hate to say that, but can you bring it back? I'd love to see it.
Bring it back before we put it out for bid?
No, 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 no. We don't wanna do that. We're just, you can go out for bid. You can actually have them.
Yeah, you can still go for bid. I think that's fine.
Just send an email and show us what she, I visualize exactly what he's saying.
So we're talking about putting the base on the bottom.
Right, on number two.
And then...
From one to two.
From one to two.
Yes. Keep the wave on the top. Have the LED portion, like, that's big on one, have that on two, to get rid of the boxy look.
Yeah, see, the challenge I have is all that blue on the left-hand side.
Yeah, I would agree.
It's just, in my mind, it's not balanced. We're good with that?
Say you're good with it. All right, I'm gonna review the game.
Watch the video.
Send pictures, send pictures.
Send pictures, Jim.
Send pictures, please. All right. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Looking forward to it. We have any idea how much that's gonna cost?
They're pretty expensive.
Yeah, I know it's pretty expensive for sure, so I guess he didn't wanna answer the question, so. All right, advisability regarding city-owned property.
Yes, sir. This is advisability regard, this is item twelve B, advisability regarding city-owned property out at the airport. And what we are asking for is city council intentions and objectives for the city-owned partial out at the airport. Staff owns, well, city owns a twenty-plus or minus acre partial of land at the airport. We're considering using this as an economic development purposes. If that's probable, then the city will benefit more than if the property were simply placed on the market for sale. City council considers the property to be made available for economic development purposes. It will be recommended that staff develop criteria, providing general criteria, for the projects that city council would consider favorable. This criteria would be similar to those considered the AVT and would be brought back to council for discussion before finalization. So this property was bought for a hundred dollars back in two thousand and four from F D, it was FEC, the railroad.
Right.
And Ms. Busaka's here to help guide you. We just need your recommendation. We can do nothing. We could use it as an economic development tool, or we could sell it.
Okay. Member Robinson, your light is on. Not anymore. Ms. Busaka, you wanna say anything? Oh, you don't go ahead? Okay, go ahead.
I think we should hold up.
You got it, Daniel.
Yes, my thoughts on it is don't sell it. Just hold on, hold on to it for now. It's an industrial piece of property. And I think that we don't absolutely know what lies in the future. And I think we will benefit from holding on to it.
Okay. Member Nelson.
Well, I have to say, originally, I thought economic development, because I thought that way we could control what goes there. And, you know, I have, sort of have a problem with that heavy industry, industrial use around the airport. But housing prices, property prices seem to be climbing. So, you know, I think Member Robinson may have a point there. Maybe we need to keep it for a little bit longer.
Okay, thank you. Member Stokoe.
I agree. I think we should just hold on to it for right now.
Okay, I'm in agreement with that, too. There you go.
Would you like for us to bring it back as an economic development tool with some guidelines?
I would say hold it for a year, bring it back next spring and say, hey, what do we wanna do? And, you know, the other thing is we might have some projects that we want to need money for. And maybe look at it then.
I think you're talking economic development.
Yes, sir. And similar to what the zone does, there are partials that could be either leased to a new prospective company coming in. We could provide it at a reasonable price to sale. There's several options that we could do with the land.
And my thought is if somebody comes in and says, hey, what staff believes is a good offer, yeah. I mean, never turn down an offer or never, never not listen to it if it's a good offer. Never turn down a good offer, especially if it's a great offer. So if it's a great offer, can we?
I think what I hear you saying is that we need to give you flexibility on that. And if someone comes along and may be interested in...
Well, we'd like to come back to council with some parameters for that before we go out to solicit.
You got it.
Okay.
You just advised us.
Sounds good. Onto item twelve C, which is Resolution twelve, two thousand and twenty-two, authorizing the state revolving fund loans projects WW zero five zero three five and project WW zero five three four. On February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, the city received notice that two projects were selected and placed on the priority list for SRF loans. The priority list included funding for the planning, design of the Lime Street Lift Station, Riverside Drive Force Main and Sisson Road Force Main, improvements in the amount of one million, five hundred and eighty thousand dollars as described in SRF project WW zero five zero three five. The priority list also included funding for the construction of the Indian River Force Main improvements as described in SRF project WW zero five zero three four in the amount of four million, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. These SRF loans will be issued at an interest rate of point zero seven percent. This will provide the city the opportunity to access fundings at extremely low interest rates during the period of soaring inflation. Accordingly, it's recommended that city council adopt Resolution twelve, two thousand and twenty-two, authorizing the city to apply for and enter into loan agreements with the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, SRF, and approve the related budget amendments. And Mr. Slaffer's here to answer any questions that you have. And as we went through budget last year, it was recommended that we do some of the projects using SRF loans, some using working capital. And this is one that we would request to use SRF loans for.
Okay, any questions for Member Robinson at the end?
I think we should go forth with it. With the interest rate is...
Point zero seven percent, eh?
Is a way to go with that. And I support it. If I had to make the recommendation, I would ask to make the motion to approve. Resolution number twelve point two zero two two, authorizing the state revolving fund loan for project WW zero five zero three five and project WW zero five zero three four.
Were you making a motion?
I did. All right.
Second with discussion.
Okay, let's move in second. Do you have any cards?
No, sir, but I wanna make sure that we're including the budget amendments in the approval.
Including the budget amendment.
Second stands.
Okay. All right, discussion.
I wanted to see if Sean had anything that you wanted to say or just here for questions.
Just two things I wanna make sure is clear. The first and foremost, the construction of the Indian River Force Main is required by a consent order. And so this loan will fund that construction. I think the other thing that I wanted to mention, if it wasn't clear in the report, is that we are, you are authorizing the city to go forward and make application, but we have already been awarded the loans by SRF. So we're merely to the place where we get the authorization to fill it out, and these loans are ours. And then the third point that I wanted to just confirm for everybody is that the costs for these four projects covered by these two loans is, and the debt service associated with these loans, has been incorporated in the current rate study. And so the rates that we have approved are supportive of these expenses moving forward.
Any other discussion? Sean, you're a class act.
Oh, thank you, sir.
You do a really good job. I appreciate it for sure, so. All right, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Nelson. Vice Mayor Jordan.
Yes.
Member Stokoe.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Petition and request from the public present? Nathan? You're not gonna win this one now, so.
Good news. There's no winning. Nathan Slusher, eight six zero, Allendale Street. Actually, I'm up here because I wanna compliment somebody. So last Friday, I went to the mayor's breakfast and Dr. Stokoe was there. And I just wanna say that she did a phenomenal job representing the city. The mayors were quite aggressive with each other. They were roasting each other pretty good, but she held her own and represented Titusville very well. So I wanted to ask to know you should all be proud of her.
Aww. She's a lot older now. Okay, any more petition and requests from the public? No? Okay. Mayor's report, I assume Mayor Diesel's report is in our...
It is, and the Northern Flank is safe tonight.
All right, for sure. For all those who don't know, he's in Alaska having a great time on a cruise. So we wish him well, for sure. Okay. Counsel, Member Stokoe, you have anything? Wow. Mr. Nelson?
Two short things.
Sure.
I saw Jeff Davis yesterday. And I asked him about Blanton Park because he had thought that he would have Blanton Park totally redone by June first.
Oh, really?
And, yeah. And apparently, they applied for the permit with St. John's sixty days ago. And St. John's is backed up. And so he doesn't have a permit yet, which is why we don't have a permanent application. So they have their fingers crossed that in the next couple of weeks, St. John's will bring his application up. So he's holding on. And he says, yes, we will get it done. One thing he did, we did talk about is, and I guess we need the city to do this, when they start doing construction, closing down that park so that we don't have people in that park. And I guess that duration has to come from the city.
Yeah, he can do it. It's a construction zone.
I know. That's what I thought. And the other thing I was, I'll pass that back on to, or you can. The other thing that I was going to say is I kind of invited to go down to see the 3D computer-printed houses. Yeah. So the lady from Habitat is going with me. And so we're going to go listen to a presentation on 3D houses. Hopefully, we tried to get Peggy to go with us. Apparently, those houses, if this is true, they're half the price of a regular house. So Habitat's looking at it for a portable housing. So hopefully, they'll be up here. I think they have ten lots up here. And they're interested in coming this way. So I'm really interested to see it. Apparently, the computers are Frank and Gary.
Okay.
And I understand that they go back and forth. And within like a day or two, a house is built.
Is it plastic or concrete?
It's concrete.
Concrete, yeah. Okay. I've seen that.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. It'll hold up in a hurricane. Well, I sort of thought, I was telling Peggy, that I would ask if she could come up here and do a presentation for planning. But I'm wondering if she would actually do a presentation for us, too. If you guys were interested. I mean, I think it's an interesting idea. Yeah.
I've seen it on YouTube. Okay.
I'm old-fashioned.
What does that mean? You want a real sticked house or what?
Yeah.
Okay, I was just wondering. It's your turn, yeah.
Well, the only thing that I have is as a part of the Affordable Housing Council or Affordable Housing Committee for the city, I spoke with a prospective developer today. And maybe, maybe interested in doing some development over on Delion, right there in the front of Palmetto Ridge. I think that's what it's, Palmetto Ridge. I was involved with that from the genesis through North of our charities. When they were originally, the idea and the concept was given that they were gonna put condos in there, upscale condos. And evidently, that didn't work out. And they are looking at coming back and looking at it again. With some other things that I will be talking with the city manager and the city attorney about.
Very good. All right. My only report is I did have the pleasure of going to the astronaut graduation. And it dawned on me that we are definitely getting old, for sure. I graduated in nineteen seventy-five, and here it is, two thousand and two. That was a long time ago. But hats off to all the graduates. There was a lot of smart kids in that audience. And actually, I was reading something. It was kind of interesting that President Bush said, oh, what's his name? Bush's son, the last Bush. Anyhow, I can't think of his name right now. No, not Jeb. Jeb wasn't president.
George.
George Bush, yeah. He said that he congratulated all the A students, but he also wanted to congratulate the C students because one day they could be president as well. So I thought that was real interesting for sure. And sometimes, you know, you laugh at that, but sometimes we forget average is okay, you know? And the average kids today is a whole lot smarter than we were when we were their age, for sure. So these are some very smart kids that we have here. And every child is not going to college. Every child doesn't need to go to college. But I just ask every child to think of themselves and make the best they can of their lives because we need them in this community and in this world. So with that, city manager's report?
Yes, sir. I have one action item for council. The special meeting request, SSA one dash twenty twenty-one, which is Winderver at Winsong. Due to the significant community interest in this item, staff is proposing to council to authorize a special meeting. And we've provided two dates for your consideration that meet with the applicant's approval.
All right. I'm gonna start this one first because in my mind, I don't wanna do that. Because all we're doing is inviting everybody to come out and say what we already heard. There's a no's and a y's. There's the noes and the yeses, and the majority of them don't want it in their community, which I don't think is fair when you're talking about, uh, property rights, but they do have a point. For us to go through this thing again when we've already gone through it, to me, to invite a party is not, I'm not in the mood for it. That's my humble opinion.
Now, it's already scheduled for the, your next meeting on the thirteen.
Exactly. I don't have a problem with that. You were talking about a special meeting, and I, I'm not looking for another special meeting for one item. So, but I'll let, um, go ahead.
I think.
What is that?
Oh, okay. It's an invitation to the Life Center Academy.
Oh, all right, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I'm thinking that you're going to have people here because of the concrete recycling plant. You're going to have a lot of people. And, you know, none of us do, does a real good job after, after ten o'clock. Some of us start getting sleepy at nine.
Yeah.
Um, I know for me, ten, ten-thirty, and I'm out, starting to get out of it. So to me, I'd rather split it up and be a little more alert, uh, more focused on what we're doing.
All right. My, my challenge I, I have with that was, first of all, we are making an assumption that the concrete thing is going to go along. And I do know, as you all know, P and Z and T E C, uh, have agreed to it, for sure, so. In my mind, it's a, it's a slam dunk, so I don't see that, um, being a long, drawn-out thing, because you've got two of our commissions who we've asked to tell us what is the right answer, have agreed that it's okay with conditions. So, um, I, I honestly just don't want to have a extra meeting just to be, you know, to me, you're kind of kowtowing to, uh, one light item. If we do it for this one, then the next one that comes up, we have to do the same thing, and, and to me, I don't want to start a precedent. That's where I am.
Well, the other thing we could consider doing is, we get to ten-thirty, eleven o'clock, and everybody's falling asleep, and we just continue the meeting till the next day.
Oh, God. You know, one of the challenges.
Not that I like that idea.
Come on, God. You know, the challenge I have is, when I was in school, I was taught that if you've got two minutes to speak, then you speak two minutes and not, you know, keep this thing going on. We have asked them to make sure that they have a representative to speak for a group. And for us to say, we're going to have a special meeting, then everybody's going to come out and tell us to say, I am not slow. I, I hear no, you know, it's, it doesn't, I don't need to hear it over and over again, and, and they all are basically saying the same thing. And unfortunately, from what I'm hearing, it's all about trust. The, the, the landowners are saying, this is all we're going to do, and those, uh, who live out there say, well, we don't trust you to do that. So just do it within the guidelines that you already have. So I, honestly, I, I just don't need to hear that over and over again, to be honest with you.
Are you going to call me?
So my suggestion.
I've been having my light on.
Well, you're not old enough to speak. Go ahead, Ms. Stokel.
Um, yeah, I kind of unfortunately agree with you, unfortunately. Um, my question, I guess, is, when, if we move it to another day, do we have to pay again to re-advertise as well?
Right now, you've advertised it for the fourteenth of June, so you could, you could table it again to another date certain. But you don't have a council, second council meeting in June, and generally, after we don't have it, when we have a recess, the next meeting is pretty full.
Right. I don't, I feel like just having it at our regular meeting, I honestly thought the first meeting with the whole group, I thought it actually went better than I was anticipating, if I'm being honest. So I don't foresee it being a huge issue. Um, I think we'll have something probably similar. Uh, and I, I know we have the concrete recycling. Are there any other big agenda items that we're anticipating?
Uh, not really. Um, I, I think we're getting through most of the ones that are.
Yeah. I think we'll just try it for the fourteenth.
You want to say anything, sir? Speak up. That's right. Let it stay as it is. Man, a few words. This time, this time. Okay, so we're going to leave it the way it is.
Uh, next is, I've got some information on the CBDG home final funding allocations for your information. And finally, as we celebrate Memorial Day on the thirtieth, which is Monday, there will be a, a Veterans Day ceremony put on by the American Legion at ten o'clock. So we put the invites on your calendar, but for the public, too, that's a, a somber day for those that, us that have served, so.
Okay.
Uh, on, on Monday at ten o'clock. Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that all you have, sir?
Colludes my report, subject to your questions.
Any questions for the city manager? Okay, city attorney, sir.
Yes, sir. I have a couple of items, uh, both in your agenda. The first is UPS class action settlement. The city of Titusville received notice about, uh, class action settlement with UPS. According to the notification, if from January first, two thousand and eleven through December twenty-ninth, two thousand and thirteen, the city shipped directly with UPS a package with a declared value in excess of three hundred dollars, pursuant to UPS's published non-retail rates or in excess of two hundred dollars, we might be eligible for payment through class action settlement. If the city does not wish to be bound by the settlement, then the city must exclude itself by May thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. If the city does not exclude itself, it will release claims as part of the settlement. I would propose we just stay part of that class action, uh, because I do not see the city as having a separate action.
Right. Do you need a motion or anything from us?
Just concurrence of, of council that you want to stay in that action.
Agree.
Okay, thank you.
We're good.
The next item is, uh, a memorandum regarding notification of rent increases. At the last council meeting, I believe it was the Mice Mayor had mentioned that the city of Cocoa was looking at an issue regarding, uh, notification of rent increases to tenants. And that's my opinion. At that point, I wasn't aware of the situation, so I've provided a memorandum to you, advising you that's my understanding that the Cocoa City Council discussed the preparation of an ordinance that would require landlords to give tenants advanced notice approximately sixty days prior to the implementation of a rate increase in excess of five percent on annual leases. And thirty days' notice for increases applicable to month-to-month leases. To date, such an ordinance has not been presented to the Cocoa Council, but the city is proposing a workshop on this issue, possibly in July. So that's letting you know that they looked at it, but they haven't taken any action, and they're going to workshop the issue. I took the opportunity to also provide you information regarding rent controls. That wasn't the question, but I thought you might ask, so I just provide information regarding rent controls. And I want to advise you that the ability to implement ordinances and rules imposing price controls is governed by Florida statute one sixty-six oh four three, which states that no law, ordinance, rule, or other measure which would have the effect of imposing control on rents shall be adopted or maintained, except as provided herein unless it is found and determined that such controls are necessary and proper to eliminate an existing housing emergency so grave as to constitute a serious maintenance to the general public. So if cities do make that finding, uh, they could propose that measure to the voters. And the voters could then vote on that, and then it would only be good for one year, and then you would have to do it again each year. So I just want to let you know, there is a process. It's a very strict process. But I just wanted to provide that information in case we were talking about rent notifications, and it was somewhat related about rent controls, so I wanted to provide you that information.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is that all you have?
Yes, sir.
Member Robinson?
Yes, uh, uh, and I don't know if all of you received it, but I received, uh, an email today to, and asked to meet with someone about, uh, rent increases in the cities. I will, uh, talk with Virginia tomorrow, and, uh, when I come in, try to arrange a meeting. I gave him a call, and he can come in and, uh, tell me what his thoughts are, so I wanted to bring that forward. All right?
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else need to come before this council? Not meetings adjourned. Thank you.